This evening, if you've got a cell phone, if you could put that on silent or vibrate, that would be great. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence tonight. Thank you, and if you'd stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. I believe everybody has a copy of our agenda for tonight. Are there any questions or changes? Mr. Chair, I would just note that item eight A, the consideration of resolution to apply for a split district, that should be actually an action item. It's not a public hearing, but I think we can probably leave it in the same place in the order of the agenda if the chair wishes. Okay, we can do that. All right. Any other changes? Would ask for a motion?
The move.
We have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Parker. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next up is our citizen comment period. We have about 15 minutes set aside for anybody that would like to speak this evening on any topic other than a public hearing that is scheduled for this evening or in the next 90 days. Don't have anybody signed up, but I believe I'm going to open the floor. You'll have three minutes to share with us. Please open by stating your name and your election district or address. Does anybody like to share with us tonight?
Hello, my name is Matthew Dudley. I'm a resident of Forest, Virginia, which I believe is... Okay, gotcha.
Well, it depends. Could be Army, could be me.
That's true.
Okay. I'm here to raise awareness for the immediate need to add an actual all-inclusive playground to Fallen Creek Park in Bedford County for use by all children, especially those with disabilities such as my child, Elijah, and many other children who are confined to wheelchairs, walkers, or have other physical or mental disabilities that make it extremely difficult for them to interact and play with their peers on a standard playground. Creating an all-inclusive park for handicapped children in the town of Bedford is crucial for promoting inclusiveness, accessibility, and the overall well-being of the community. Such a park ensures that children with disabilities have equal opportunities for play and social interaction. Fostering a sense of belonging, it also promotes physical activity, which is essential for health and development of all children regardless of their abilities. Additionally, all-inclusive parks send a powerful message of acceptance and diversity, contributing to the town's reputation as an inclusive and compassionate community. Overall, establishing a park that caters to the needs of handicapped children is a positive step towards building more equitable and supportive environment for all residents. The Bedford Parks and Recreation have done an amazing job adding adaptive sports to their program, and it's has seen an outpouring of community support to continue giving these children equal opportunities to be healthy and have the same advantages as other children their age. We come together to ask for the approval of this project in the capital improvement budget that was proposed by the Bedford County Parks and Recreation. You haven't seen that yet. They told me to tell you. Don't look at me like I have three heads because... And for them to lead this project, it is vital for them to be at the forefront of this project so they can utilize the proposal to apply for any available grants after the fact and any funding provided by additional resources. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? All right, then I will close the citizen comment portion, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Stoudt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the consent agenda this evening, you have two items: a consideration of a resolution authorizing the advertisement of a request for proposal to purchase or lease the Red Barn located at 1257 County Farm Road, and a consideration of a resolution revising the bylaws of the Agricultural Economic Development Advisory Board.
Any questions for Justin on the consent agenda? Entertain a motion?
I got one real quick.
Yes.
When you say a purchase or a lease, when you talk about a purchase, you mean like tear it down, move?
The request for proposal is kind of wide open, so whatever the proposer would return in that RFP process, they could have the option of leasing it, purchasing it, tearing it down, removing it. It's it's we're kind of just want to test the water, see what is out there as far as opportunities. It's not locked down solid on that, yeah.
Any other questions? And if anyone is ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion for Ms. Parker to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Scott. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from January 8th of 2024. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2024.
We have a motion for Mr. Sharp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Moves us on to public hearings and presentations, but our next item is an action item and not public here. So this is consideration of a resolution authorizing the submission of a request for a waiver from the State Board of Elections to operate two split precincts for any election held in 2024. That's Resolution R.012224-03. Mr. Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have two split precincts currently in the county. One is Precinct 104, Barnhart Baptist Church. That split precinct was created by an error in the census block drawings from the last census, and Precinct 604 Bedford Welcome Center, which was the result of the recent town annexation process. State law requires us to request a waiver to operate those two precincts as split precincts. So what before what is before you is a resolution to ask the State Board for that approval.
Any questions for Mr. Skelly?
I didn't quite hear what he said.
This would be a resolution to continue the operation of two split precincts, one at Barnhart Baptist and the second at the Bedford Welcome Center.
That is correct.
This is an annual thing that we have to do with the State Board of Elections.
Thank you.
Okay. And I would entertain a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R.012224-03.
We have a motion for Mr. Sharp. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bensley. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Forgot everybody's name. That moves us on to a public hearing, which is a consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter Six Elections, specifically Article Three, Precincts and Polling Places, specifically to amend Division One generally, Division Two precinct boundaries, and Division Three satellite absentee voting. This is Ordinance 012224-04. Mr. Skelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is another requirement, at least a component of this is a requirement of state law to establish satellite voting locations. The ordinance before you establishes the Fallen Creek Center Chapel for the March 5th Presidential Primary Election and the, excuse me, the June 18th primary election. And then for the general election, the satellite office would be the Bedford County Gym at Turning Point Road. Another component of this ordinance change is to change the name of Precinct 304 Freedom Baptist Church to One in Christ Church as they change their name, but the boundaries, the precinct, everything, and that remains the same. And again, this is something that's required every year of us to establish those satellite voting locations by ordinance.
Any questions for Mr. Skelly? All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll need to open that up to the public for anyone that would like to speak for or against this ordinance. Ms. Gunter is here.
Mr. Skelly noted that the June primary would be at the chapel. It will be at the gym as well due to scheduling arrangements with the Parks and Recreation Department.
Okay. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak from the public? If not, I will close the citizen comment time and have discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if there's no discussion, then I will make a motion to approve Ordinance
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Sharp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Parker. This is a roll call. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That brings us to consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for painting the Bedford County Courthouse Bell Tower. That's Resolution R.012224-05. Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening. Tonight presenting for your consideration, a resolution to authorize the execution of a contract for painting the Bedford County Courthouse Bell Tower. We solicited competitive bids previously, and we received three bids. Our successful bidder, Eagles Nest Regeneration DBA Transformation Painting, was the successful low bidder with a total price of $17,500 for that repainting, which was within our budget, and I would recommend supporting that, supporting that resolution.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kaufman? All right.
Mr. Chair, if there's no discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Sharp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. This is a roll call. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, motion passes. Brings us to consideration of a resolution approving the notice of award and authorizing an appropriation to update the Bedford Area Welcome Center displays. That's Resolution R.012224-07. You doing this one too?
I'm doing this one too, yes, sir. Likewise for this one, competitive bids were solicited for the repairs in the Bedford County Administration Building Atrium. One price was received, which was within our budget and within our projected estimate, and we suggest taking the add alternate bid, which would include painting of the atrium in its entirety on all floors for a total of $109,867.
Okay. Just for the record, I need to clarify that I announced Welcome Center one, and this is
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not that. This is the atrium repairs, which is Resolution R.012224-06. You don't need to change. I just need to clarify.
Sorry, I was looking at the...
I skipped right over it. All right, so we're talking about the atrium. Any questions? All right, would entertain a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R.012224-06.
We have a motion for Ms. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bensley. This is a roll call as well. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes, motion passes. Now we're on to the Resolution R.012224-07, which is the Bedford Area Welcome Center displays. Nicole Johnson.
Okay, thank you very much. I do have some visuals of the Welcome Center displays that I'm sharing right now and will on the screen also. So Bedford is very fortunate to have a large and very beautiful Welcome Center. We want to make sure it's properly preserved. We have recently completed two CIP projects, including painting the exterior of, hold on. Yeah, okay, painting the exterior in the spring of 2023, which is the first time that had been done since opening in 2000, 2004, sorry. And then we also had the new sign installed in December of 2023 to replace the original sign, which had been in place since 2004. So now we want to focus on the interior. We are requesting board authorization to approve the notice of award and to appropriate additional funding towards this project from the Transient Occupancy Tax Reserve Fund. The project will include... Okay. I think it is. Okay, thanks. Logo updates throughout the Welcome Center. We have the old logo and slogan on, it's just about everywhere. It's plastered everywhere. So we want to update those. We want to update the two wall maps. We have one that kind of displays the town and county of Bedford with maps, and then we have the Virginia State map panel. The weather center, where we have the TV that shows current weather and usually local news. This is the local attraction wall, which is very outdated, so this would be a part of the updates. And then the photo, the grid photo wall, which has 14 images currently displayed that all need to be updated. We've thought about maybe doing some digital displays here that can be more easily updated in the future. So with all of those updates, we are looking at doing some digital, possibly interactive displays. This would allow us to better showcase local attractions and businesses and modernize the inside of the Welcome Center. An RFP was released in October, and one proposal was received. It was from Webb Richards Design, formerly known as They Are Designs, and they were the original contractor that did the displays that you've seen here. The proposal price is $161,000. Funding of $75,000 is available in the current fiscal year CIP budget. $63,000 is available for patio and picnic area improvements, but we are no longer doing that project, so it can be moved to this one. That brings the total currently available to $138,000. We are requesting appropriation from the Transient Occupancy Tax Reserve for the remaining funds, which is $23,000. The final project, if the final project ends up totaling less than the proposed amount, the remaining funds will revert back to the TOT reserve. With your approval, we'll begin work immediately with the goal of completing by April 30th. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Nicole?
I did not hear a lot of what she said. It was just dead air for several instances, but I'm not going to ask her to go back and repeat it.
All right. All right, so entertain a motion one way or the other.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt Resolution R.012224-07.
We have a motion for Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Bensley. This is a roll call. Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I gotta say, I barely heard what she said. I feel, you know, I, can I abstain? Because I barely heard what she said. My vote either way is not going to change a thing.
Okay. Did you say you're abstaining?
I mean, I barely heard what she said. There was a lot of dead air. I don't know what was going on, but whether she wasn't speaking into the microphone or whatever, but you've got a majority of votes, so I, but I just feel better about it if I abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention. Chair votes yes. That would be six. Yay, one abstention. Motion passes. Next up, we have consideration of a resolution approving the submission of an application for the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program Grant for site development in the New London Business and Technology Center, and $787,500 in matching funds. This is Resolution R.012224-09. Ms. Bailey.
Oh, okay, there we go. Good evening. Thank you all for being here and listening. So I have submitted a, I want to share with you a little bit about the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program Grant. This program was established by the Governor of Virginia to make more competitive sites for projects. So when we have prospects coming into the state, you have available sites for those projects. So this is the second year of the, also known as the VB-RSP Grant Cycle, and the state has $150 million allocated to site readiness. And these, these grants require a one-to-one match. So as you can see from the slide, basically, because we are a more rural locality, they require a 50 contiguous acre is the minimum requirement for the pad-ready sites, and also increases product, project-ready inventory for higher wind potential sites and to advance sites from lower tiers to higher tiers. Also, when you're packet, and we'll be talking about this, is sort of a, if you say one to, one or the other, there's also a grant for the Virginia Tobacco Revitalization Commission, otherwise known as the TRRC. They have a grant available for sites and infrastructure, which will further develop industrial sites, access roads, and advance sites also from lower tiers to higher tiers. That's just kind of a little background about what the grants are. And here's what we're trying to do. So to sort of familiarize you where this park is and for citizens to see, on Forest 60, it's in New London, just past, you know, the Food Lion Shopping Center in, in Forest. So there's a main road here, which is Mead Road, and you'll see lots 15 and 16. These are what we've been calling Phase Two. When the EDA did a grant earlier this year, they did the project earlier with Virginia Business Ready Sites and took this and created a whole new master plan for Phase Two. With that came some cost estimates for how we would build this out to make these two larger sites more, more ready. Currently, there is no road access. So if we were to have a prospect, which we've had, we have no road access to get to these lots. So let me kind of go into here. All right, so I've got a drawing of, this is the overall master plan, and the EDA is looking to expand the available sites in the New London Business and Technology Center, also known as Phase Two. And so this would, this project, if awarded, and y'all were to grant the, the match requirement, it would extend the paved portion of Mead Road. And if you'd need me to kind of walk over there, you'll just sort of see it, but you can see the red line and the blue line that shows the site infrastructure and, and sort of the roadway. And so what we're proposing is that we do a partial roadway and add a gravel road for Dominion Power. They currently have no access to those lots, to, I mean, to their power lines. And then we would also add lines for communication, power, or light, light, you know, light poles and water lines. And we could also clear and grub Lot 15, which would also, that would have an available space for about 170,000 square foot building. We would also add a gravel parking lot for the park amenities to that. The timeline for this project, if awarded, again, this is all if, 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 if awarded, it would be July 24th to January 26th. So Phase One, and I've got a little bit closer up, the probable, very much estimates at this point from the engineer is about $4.43 million. So what I'm seeking is funding of $2.215 million from the Virginia Economic, Economic Development Partnership, another $1.1 million from the Tobacco Commission, of which that grant is due on February 8th. The application is due February 8th. The EDA, at its December meeting, awarded or authorized $320,000 towards this project. And so that leaves the balance to match of $787,500. Just to let you know, because I know that we're going through the budget process, and this would be CIP funding, the timeline for this is the, the grant was due, the application was due on January 11th, so I have submitted that. We can withdraw it at any time. The next round is a virtual site tour, which I have with them on February 27th, unless you tell me otherwise. Following that, if we get to the next round, we would have in-person tours in April, and then they would make, the state would make their decisions in May or June. And we can withdraw at any time. Any questions?
When you say withdraw it anytime, you mean even after you've done your walkthrough and they even offer us the money, we can say no, we decided we don't want it?
Yes. Yes. That's correct.
It looks like if you do go through with this, that we're going to lose the golf course?
We would move part of the golf course, part of the disc golf course. So this would intentionally not be started until after the World Championships in August. The, we, I have spoken with Parks and Rec when this first came about, and we are looking at, if I can go back a slide, into the, sort of beyond where the water is, that last, that upper triangle. I have talked to them about just kind of putting on some thinking caps and maybe reworking some of that area, because feas, feasibly is just not a good site for a building, but we can absolutely use that for a park amenity. There is also another lot that I could also see being used as a, a disc golf, at the other end of the park.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How do you get to the disc golf area if this road that's in the red and the blue is, is the part you're talking about doing? So how do you get there now?
A little, right now, it's sort of where the red and green, I mean, the red and blue starts on the far left.
Yeah.
And they're talking about putting it where that little green box is, I think.
It's kind of hard to see, but sort of...
So how do you get, where is the disc golf right now?
I wish, I need a pointer. Over here. Oh, yeah, I'll go over here. Okay, yep.
These little lines here, you see?
Yeah.
Essentially the courses, the holes in the course.
So this is hole one, and it goes along the perimeter. It was intentionally designed to be on the, on the, like sewer right away or sewer easement line. So basically, it's in all these easements. Right now, we've got a few holes that are where, sort of a grassy area is where the road is currently.
Or where the building would be at 16.
Well, if 16, yes, there's a few, a few holes here, but this, right now, for this project, we are not proposing to do anything with this lot for this project. What we're considering, what clearing and grubbing would be this lot, of which there's nothing on there. There's currently a practice hole back here on the south side electric lines. There's currently a practice hole back here on the south side electric lines. But then, you know, we would definitely work with even Paul Macbeth and with Parks and Rec to get these holes moved to over here and reconfigure as needed.
So where do you park to go, to get to the disc golf, where do you park?
Currently, there's a parking lot right in here.
You go through, you go sort of straight through that little roundabout? And there's a gravel lot there?
Yeah. Currently, just beyond Belvac, this is a gravel road. And there's sort of a parking area here next to the substation. But there's also a new, a whole new parking lot over here. So this would remain. We wouldn't lose this parking area. We would add another one.
So is this request asking for commitment on the county portion matching now? Or is it subject to receiving these grants?
They need to have the commit, they would like to have the commitment from the county, but just know that you could withdraw that. But in order for me to move forward this, they have to have a match. They have to have the funds. Now, I will say there are other funding sources I could go to. I could go to BRWA. I could go to Dominion, and I can ask for other funding as well. But that's, go ahead. I just feel like that's part of the, just because of the timing of it, I couldn't go before all of them and ask them all those questions. But I have reached out and just dropped some hints.
And for that reason, we are not seeking appropriation tonight of any funds, because obviously, one grant could get approved and not the other, which would change the funds still needed to match, so forth and so on. So this is more just, if everything were to be approved as proposed, yes, some sort of commitment that we would be willing to fulfill that match requirement. But we are not appropriating any funds right now. So once we know the outcome of both grants, then we would need to come back to you at that time for actual appropriation of necessary funds. So even at that point, you could say, thanks, but no.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is the EDA looking for 787,500 taxpayer dollars?
That is, that is the request.
787,000?
Yes.
And if the tobacco grant doesn't come through, would it be an additional 1.1 million?
Yes.
At what point, we would probably withdraw. I would like to see us approve this, but I want to see the grants, get as many grants as you can, whatever you can't get, whatever's left, I would like to see it split between the EDA and the county. That's what I would like.
Okay.
Do you have a discussion, questions for staff?
Other than lots 15 and 16, are there other, other lots in there that have been made pad-ready?
We have one current lot that is pad-ready, and that is Lot Four. I will go back a slide just for the audience to see. Lot Four is partially pad-ready, yes.
So you have three lots, essentially?
We still, at the end of this project, would have one pad-ready site. We have two others that are partially cleared and grubbed. And this would give us one larger cleared and grubbed site. That would be for the, a larger building than we have capacity for now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know that in other counties, from what I've been told, that spending this money is, has, in most cases, or some cases, I'm going by hearsay now, but has borne fruit. But I also believe that a lot of these other counties don't have what Bedford County has to offer. And to me, I'm opposed to doing this tonight, because I'm not going to be in favor of it even months from now. $787,000 for what I'm going to call a pipe dream. Something down the line that we might sell. When the reality is, is so often, we wind up in negotiations, and we're having to give more and more and more, pay more and more out of the county taxpayers' budget to try to get somebody in here. We've spent, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars on the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, and it's borne no fruit. And Ms. Bailey and her coworkers, we spend a lot of money sending them all over the United States to exhibitions where they try to bring businesses in here. I think it's time that we come to reality and look what Bedford County, the strengths of our county, what we have right now, and focus on what we do very well. I know any smart businessman, that's what he does, instead of dreaming big dreams that don't bear fruit. And I think it's time we have a reality check here. And I, for one, cannot support this at all.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Bailey, do we have money right now in the CIP for development of the park?
We have a little bit of money for a couple of lots, yes. You've got about $70,000 in there right now. And that is actually going to be something I'm going to be bringing before the EDA at the next meeting to see if they want to proceed with that other project. Oh, that is tied to the other grant? Yes. We have another Tobacco Commission grant that that was tied to. And that's been on the books for about three years. And we're kind of ready to see that either move along or get put back in the CIP. Yes, ma'am.
So you've got a split for the EDA's portion, and I forget what that was, 320?
320.
320?
Mm-hmm.
How did you arrive at 320 from them, and then the 700 changed?
When we asked the EDA for this project, when it came to them, and I asked them to provide funding for it, that's what was proposed at the time, back in December. The engineering costs were estimated, again, these are all estimates. But the estimated engineering costs were 320,000, and that's what they said they would pay for. At the time.
Would Mr. Robinson have anything to add since he's here tonight? Or not?
Would you like to speak, Jimmy?
Thank you. We have had discussions that these developments of these projects are long-term. And my point has been, over the last year and a half, two years now, that you have to have inventory to be able to have clients come in and see property ready. The major decision, the decision-makers in these corporations, I mean, they make decisions in 10 days. They look to see what you have in inventory, and if it meets the criteria of what their demands are, and they move quickly. If they come and you do not have that, and you have a lot of timeline to be able to develop the infrastructure all, then they back off. And I guess the sum of my report on that is, you've got to have inventory to sell it. And the closer it is marketable-ready, the better chance you're going to have of getting a client.
So I have a question. What are we currently marketing 15 and 16 for without road access?
We're not really able to fully market it, but I have mentioned it to prospects who want to, depending on what their timeline is. If you've got a three- to five-year timeline, which most of these people do not, I can have you a site. But without a road, you know, so I feel like if we can do this project over the next 18 months, that'll at least position us a little bit better to, you know, apply for the next round, if y'all would like to see fit. But at least we would have road access to these sites, which we do not have right now.
I guess my question is, if this road goes in, how much does the market value increase? Because if we are an investor in that, I would certainly expect a return back upon the sale of these.
That's a great question, and that's something that we can certainly discuss. But yeah, you're absolutely right. Well, it absolutely will increase the property value. But I'm not a realtor, and I can't provide that, you know, those costs right now, but...
I guess...
It'd be more than 7,500 acres.
In the absence of clawback, if you will, call it that. When you sell those lots, that would all go to the EDA?
Unless you would like some return on your investment, yes. Or if you'd like a return on your investment. But the way, the way the EDA looks at it is, even if they were to kind of, quote, "give away a project," or, I mean, "give away property that's tied to a performance." You must have this investment. You must have, you know, a $50 million investment in a building. You must have 200 employees, or you must have, you know, whatever these are. But a larger building is going to get you larger employees. And we start going after bigger companies, and the nuclear industry is really taking off. And you see what other industries are doing in the Lynchburg region. And you've got all these jobs and all these other investments and things that are happening. There's always more, I guess, there's an extra, like, one and a half jobs for every other job that's created.
Mr. Chair, I'm comfortable with moving forward with this, because we know we can get out of it at any point. But I would like to see the breakout between the county and EDA leveled up a little bit. I've got a couple of questions. Beyond putting the road in, they're just clearing some trees?
Yes.
That's it?
And grubbing some, yes.
What's grubbing? I'm sorry.
You're taking the trees out, but you're also kind of stirring the dirt up a little bit. Removing all the stumps and everything.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead. Sure.
Okay. What's referenced too in grubbing in construction is, the trees are harvested. Of which, we own the lot, so we own the trees. So you will get some return value for the timber. And then grubbing, it means they go in and they remove the stumps, so that you're working with earth now, and it's a smoother surface. And then the next step would be to come in and grade it to elevation for the pad-ready.
Right. Okay.
Do you have an estimate of how much you expect to get back from the trees, the lumber?
I can tell you that one lot that we recently looked at, which was Lot Number 11, I met two timber companies over there, and it was $26,300. And that is a 13 acre, 13 acres. And it is a heavy hardwood timbered lot. So there is value in the timber.
2,000 acres, so you might be looking at... My, my other data point here is, over the years, I've heard that the, I mean, we know that there's no rail here. So an industry that requires rail, we don't have the rail infrastructure. The other major infrastructure that I've heard over the years is gas, natural gas. And it seems to me, if we were going to invest in making the New London Park more marketable, we might be better suited in seeing if there's grant money to get gas lines around to the park. Because then that would open up that entire park.
I have spoken with gas companies about that. That is about $2 million a mile, and I believe that's about a $20 million investment.
Well, it used to be about eight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And from what I understand, and after talking with them and hearing other of our local, my local colleagues, they will not bring in gas unless they know they're going to have a customer. So it's always the chicken or the egg. You know, it's just, if I can bring, if I say I've got a customer or a prospect who's going to move in, and you're going to do this, it's still going to take time, but it's got to have that. And they might even do it for free, but they're going to have to have a prospect for it. But they won't do it without a prospect.
Do we have to have a paved road? Could it be a gravel road? And then we take, maybe sweeten the offer for the, knowing the lot then is not as valuable, because we haven't put the money in for the road, we sweeten the price on the lot?
The only, my only thing is, not a why bother, but it's all the other infrastructure that goes in with it. So, you know, I don't, maybe you can answer this question, but with sewer lines and water lines being put now, I would assume they would want more of a paved road, add sidewalks and all that. Is that correct?
I think you also have an issue that VDOT isn't going to take it into the system for maintenance, which, like, Mead Road up to that point, they, VDOT knows the snow plowing and everything else.
They do.
I believe. So if it's gravel, that's going to be county resources that have to be spent on maintenance and...
Any VDOT money for...
I have actually asked VDOT for that, and where is Eric? Mr. Smedley was in here earlier, and we have gone down that road. So there are other improvements to VDOT, to Mead Road, that need to happen. And we are looking at smart-scale projects for that.
My issue, just like when we voted on the money for raises, I don't know what the budget is this year. I don't know what revenue is coming in. I don't know what, you know, what issues we have that we're going to have to be voting on. So I hate to say yes. I mean, I'm all for it. I think I have voted for every economic development every time you've come. But my concern is, I've heard that we have some really big issues with the landfill. We have some really big price tags coming in with fire and rescue. And how can I say yes to this when I don't know what those price tags are? I don't know what the revenues are.
And my answer is, you can always, we can always withdraw.
Yeah. You have a timeline on this project.
Yeah.
You know, but we're talking a year.
And like Ms. Anderson said, I'm not asking for an actual allocation yet, or appropriation, yes.
And I would say, too, because we're not asking for an appropriation tonight, I would think by the time we get further into the process of needing to really make a decision, we should have those numbers and a good portion of the budget ironed out. So we would be in a much better position to know is 787 feasible. We also have a very healthy fund balance, if that was the desire of the board. So I don't think approving this tonight locks you in and puts you in a position where, you know, where we can't get out of this later on if we determine the funds aren't available or it's still not a project that we would like to continue with.
At what point do we have to know that? At what point do we have to say, we're going forward or not going forward? At what point will we go?
If we get the grant in June, and y'all have not, you say no, then I just don't accept the grant. So even if awarded, doesn't mean you have to actually accept it.
Correct.
And you're working on the budget. You think this is going to fit into the budget?
Based off of what we looked at, honestly, I don't know. We've had some things come in expenditure-wise that I wasn't anticipating. But I can tell you that our major revenues, they are still very healthy. They are still above this year's budget, just not quite as significantly as prior years. But I'm working through those numbers now. I think that, again, by the time we're in a position where we have to make a decision and commit funding, we will know that.
So we're just voting to say that you can put in the application that you've already put in?
And basically, to continue the process and move along, yes. And the grant, just, it does require that.
Yeah. If they don't, if they don't get this, then they have to withdraw the application.
Yes. And they may still say no. I have, like I said, the, if you say yes tonight, I will have a virtual site tour with them at the end of February. And then we'll see what goes and what happens after that.
Any other questions?
This is in my district, but I am tossed up, I'll tell you. I'm messed up over this, because I'm just really concerned with this year's budget. I'm really concerned with what I've heard about fire and rescue. I'm really concerned with what's going on in landfill. And I just, this is, this is over three-quarters of a million dollars. And it's a lot of money, and I love economic development. It's my favorite thing to spend money on. I mean, it's one of my favorites, but I just love it when jobs come, because that means people are getting an income. I love it. But it's just really hard for me to support it when I don't know what we're going to see in the budget.
Well, I will, if you allow me to say one more thing. Maybe there's some other moving around in the CIP with some other funding that's been sitting there that we can... around in the CIP with some other funding that's been sitting there that we can talk about in the process, I'm just, like, the COF fund or something.
We have the governor's fund.
Yeah.
So there's probably about three hundred and seventy thousand sitting in CIP right now that, um, if you all choose, we could redirect towards this, which would make the additional funding, um, ask, what about three hundred thousand more?
That's assuming you don't get any grants.
That, well, that would be assuming we got all of the grants.
Yes.
Could that money be used for the landfill if not for this?
Um, possibly, but if you weren't gonna redirect it to this, then, um, at least three hundred thousand of that three seventy, you would probably wanna leave allocated, um, for what it's in right now, which is a match for a governor's opportunity fund, should that come along with the prospect.
And, and if I'm not mistaken, sometime like not that long ago, we approved a significant sum of money for the Bedford Regional Water Authority, and, and I, I'm very much aligned with what Ms. Bensley's suggesting, and, and in addition to that, we don't know what the future brings economically for this country still, we have an upcoming election, but, um, the economy is, by what the liberal media will tell us, the economy is certainly far from being good. And, and in addition to this, I, I, I see Bedford County, it's, it's difficult to find employees, and we currently have robust business climate, the, the county is in good shape, our books are in good shape, and, and I, I just can't commit to, to a million dollars for a pipe dream.
Okay. Any other comments, discussion up here? All right. So what's the pleasure of the board on this?
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, my comment. I'm, I agree with Charlotte with that, that we got some big items coming up, and we raised the taxes last year, and if we even get close to talking about raising taxes again, I'm against it. So unless y'all can come up with some magic formula where all this is gonna fit in the budget, no tax increase, and, uh, plus, even, even if it is a tax increase, I don't know how we're gonna handle some of the stuff that's coming up with the county landfill and the, uh, first responders. They got some big items they need to continue giving us the service we need. I don't, I don't see that, from what I've heard and what I think, I don't think we're gonna have three quarters of a million dollars to put towards this, even if you get all the grants coming in, I don't think we're gonna have it unless we all just say, oh, well, we want it and let's increase the taxes again and get it. So I just don't see how we're gonna come up with, if everything works out, I don't see how we can even say we got three quarters of a million we can play with in the budget.
One more question before we vote.
Mm-hmm.
Supervisor Johnson made a good point, can we get more from EDA? And like if we use that three hundred that we have in CIP, could we get more from EDA to bring it up more closely, and then that, that three hundred we could move over, and then there would be a lot less?
I can certainly bring that to them at the next meeting.
I think you need to do that. Can we, can we table this?
I don't think we can table it, 'cause you have a deadline, right?
It's already been filed.
It's already, I can withdraw it.
But she has to withdraw if we don't.
You have to withdraw it? If we table it until next month?
At some point, yeah. I would have to withdraw.
We, we could approve it tonight, and then if we.
That's correct.
Don't want it.
Correct.
Withdraw next month.
That's correct.
It's not a commitment if we approve it.
But if we approve it, EDA's not gonna wanna help.
No, I think they've got, they'll get the message, because it's not gonna happen if they don't.
I mean, I think we could, we could come up right now and say, here's a max that we're willing to contribute, make it work.
Are we gonna stop all this spending in Bedford County? And, uh, I, I don't, don't understand this, even to talk, say, well, we could always reneg on this, um, to me, that, that sends a bad message.
We have invested, the reason I'm thinking about it, Mr. Supervisor Davis, is we have invested in that park, and we are reaping dividends from that park.
I, I don't disagree with you that we've invested in that park, and I think someday that park will bear fruit.
It is bearing, it is bearing fruit, it's not a pipe dream, it is bearing fruit.
Right. Uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Bensley, I was speaking, I, I think that someday that park will bear great fruit, but not at this time. There's, there's a lot of uncertainty economically speaking, businesses are, sales are down across the country, uh, automobile sales, home sales are slowing, uh, as you might be aware, I, at least from what I know, and, and, and other retail sales, big ticket sales are slowing down, and we could be seeing a, a freight train hit the brakes here economically speaking. And, and I think the other points that were made about the landfill, uh, fire and rescue, um, again, I think we should just not support this tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution R. zero one two 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 four dash zero nine with a limit of four hundred thousand dollars in matching funds, uh, and ask EDA to find the grants and to up their ante to where the county, cost of the county is four hundred thousand.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Johnson, um, to approve with a maximum match of four hundred thousand, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second for Ms., Mr. Sharp. This would be a roll call vote, Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Parker?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Because we can still take it away after this vote, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
It's too me again.
You wanted that job.
Um, with the caveat that I'm gonna ask for a call back if we get this, um, I'm gonna vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes four, three. That moves us to Resolution R. zero one two 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 four dash oh eight, which is a resolution approving submission of application to the Virginia Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission Grant for Site Development. It's the same thing.
Ditto. It's basically, uh, the grant application is due on February eighth, this would be used as a, you, you can have up to fifty percent of your match come from the Tobacco Commission, so not sure if we'll get this or not, but you don't know until you try. So, I would like to ask for, uh, the resolution to be approved for the, um, one point one oh seven five hundred, and an application is a required match for the, for the TRRC grant.
Okay, you've already debated this out, is there a motion regarding the Tobacco Commission Grant?
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R. zero one two 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 four dash zero eight.
And we have a motion for Ms. Bensley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Johnson, again, this is a roll call, Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Parker?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
And Chair votes yes, motion passes four, three.
Thank you all.
That moves us to consideration of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute, execute a contract with UKG for human resources payroll, time and attendance solutions, Resolution R. zero one two 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 four dash ten. Ms. Anderson?
Hi, good evening, um, so currently, the county's human resources payroll, timekeeping and attendance processes are pretty much entirely manual. Um, I mean, this includes our recruiting, processing of applications, uh, onboarding of new employees, benefits enrollment, timekeeping, so forth and so on. But because all of these processes are so manual, they are very time consuming and they are open to error. Um, and it was for all of these reasons that back in twenty eighteen, when we executed a contract with Tyler Technologies, we did include a human resources payroll module in that contract. Um, but to date, this module has not yet been implemented, we were focusing on getting the, um, modules related to online permitting, financials, tax, all of those implemented first. So with all of those done, we were able to kind of now turn back, refocus on human resources and payroll, and we did determine that it would be in the best interest of the county to consider, review and compare other HR payroll solutions to include timekeeping and attendance, um, to the original solution provided in the Tyler contract. So to begin that evaluation process, staff, uh, did request an updated proposal from Tyler Technologies to include that timekeeping solution, um, and then we also requested a new proposal from the Ultimate Cronos Group, also known as UKG, uh, through the Omni Cooperative Procurement Contract. We did actually, uh, request a proposal from our current payroll provider, they chose not to respond, however. So during the evaluation process, we compared all of those written proposals, we, we being finance, human resources, IT, and county administration sat through two day demonstrations from each vendor, um, we contacted all the vendor references, we went and did a site visit with a, um, another locality that actually used portions of both solutions. And then as a final step in the process, we act, we invited key personnel from public safety, social services, and the nursing home to join in a demonstration of their advanced scheduling options, um, that each solution offered. And throughout every phase of the process, UKG proved to be the better solution, um, to meet our needs. So tonight, we're here requesting your authorization to execute the contract with UKG, their solution will provide an opportunity for current processes to be online and automated. Um, it is a software as a service or SaaS solution, so it would be maintained and backed up by the vendor's data centers, but it would be dependent on the county's IT infrastructure for connectivity and access. There is a one-time cost to implement this solution that's estimated at a hundred thousand dollars, that includes an option for change management services, since this is something that would impact every employee, um, in the system. There is approximately four hundred and twenty-five thousand already available in the county's general fund CIP to cover that one-time cost. The ongoing, uh, cost, operational cost for the solution is approximately two hundred and five thousand per year, but that cost would be partially offset by the elimination of our existing payroll services, um, so that the net increase to the general fund is about ninety-six thousand five hundred. The contract, uh, if executed, would have an initial term of sixty months, and during that timeframe, the price for the ongoing services would be locked in, so it would not change. At the end of that initial term, we could either renew for one year with a three percent cost increase, or we could renegotiate the contract, um, which might be a little more than three percent, but then you could lock in the cost again, we would just have to see what, um, options we had at the time of renewal and what was more favorable. Any questions?
Questions for Ashley?
I do.
Yes.
Tyler, did you say we did not get the module with Tyler, or we did?
We did purchase, I say purchase, we did contract the HR payroll module, um, with the Tyler Technologies entire ERP package, but it has not been implemented.
Why?
We were holding off until we got the financials, tax, and permitting phases of the project complete.
So. Took us six years to get to this point?
Yes, sir. This project should be completed within twelve months?
I think I heard that same statement, uh, from you six years ago.
I understand that, um, unfortunately, I can't speak to six years ago, but I can speak to since Elizabeth and I have been here, and in that timeframe, we have gotten everything, uh, implemented, with the exception of this one module. So, um, I know that there were delays in the beginning, but I know that my staff, the human resources staff, IT, we are all committed to making this happen, um, and completing this project. It is critical to not just our staff, but also employees, um, they'll have the ability to do, um, their own, like, address changes, things like that, that they currently don't have basically an employee self-service, um, a lot of things will be available online that aren't currently, right now, we have paper time sheets that we write our time down on, um, it's sent in to my staff, they have to manually calculate everything, so, I mean, this is a very critical project to this organization, and we are going to see it through and make sure it happens.
So you guarantee twelve months?
I can't guarantee twelve months, but I guarantee by the end of next year.
What's the operational cost if we had decided to stay with Tyler?
Uh, the ongoing cost would be about thirty-four thousand a year, the difference is that they are an on-premise solution. So, UKG, again, is a SaaS solution, that means we don't host the data here, they kind of host everything, back it up, Elizabeth can speak a little better to the actual technical terms of this, but by being an on-premise solution, there's a lot more that, um, our IT staff has to do, um, with the product to keep it up to date and keep it running efficiently. So it's, it's, you pay more for the one-time cost, the one-time cost for the Tyler proposal is three hundred and sixty-six thousand, but in the long run, you do pay less per year, but you're also taking on a lot more in terms of maintaining the product. And I can tell you, Tyler Technologies, they are moving towards a SaaS-only solution, I think because we are an on-premise, they're allowing us to stay on-premise for a little while, but there's probably going to come a point in the future where we will be forced to move to a SaaS solution with Tyler Technologies as well.
So when, when were you gonna, if we approve this tonight, when were you gonna start the ball rolling on this?
Um, we will execute the contract, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, there should be a kickoff meeting within the next four to six weeks, once they get their team in place and that is able to be scheduled. Um, my staff and I have a goal of January one, twenty twenty-five for go-live, again, I can't guarantee that, um, but with payroll, you always wanna go live at the first of a quarter, so if January one, twenty twenty-five did not happen, it would bump to April one of twenty twenty-five. But by the end of next fiscal year, we intend to have this done.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, you mentioned that currently folks write in their time on their time cards, you don't have time clocks where they clock in and clock out?
No, sir, we do not, it is all paper, and with this, we would now have a time clock, um, there are multiple ways that people can clock in, um, but the primary one that we would utilize is through people's desktop, they would be able to access the solution through, um, a web address basically and log their time, clock in, clock out.
Would you anticipate any savings from that?
Possibly, yes, but I don't think that we have, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To me, that might be a sensitive question, but.
Yes, and I understand what you're saying, and I do think that, um, there could be some savings.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Any other discussions or comments from the board? What would be the pleasure?
Only thing I can say is, if this isn't implemented as quick as she says, I'm gonna be very upset.
We'll make him mad.
Challenge accepted, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board on this? Somebody gotta do it one way or the other.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion, we approve Resolution R. zero one two 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 four dash one zero.
We have a motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Sharp, this is a roll call, Mr. Scott?
Oh, you call me first every time tonight, every single time tonight.
'Cause Bob's not on that side tonight.
He likes your hair.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes.
That's all of our action.
That's all of our action items. Let's see, we don't have any board committees to report tonight. Um, board comments, is it anything that anyone would like to share this evening?
I'm thankful to hear from the citizens that came in to talk about the all-inclusive park. I'm very sad to hear that, um, the Rotary Club's park that they have been working on and raising funds for, does not provide for the needs of their son Eli and others like him that are on a wheelchair. They showed me pictures where there's, um, like mats put over, you know, to try to get the wheelchairs over, just not a good situation for them. Um, I don't know where the funds are gonna come from, but I would like us to move in that direction, to have some, um, type of facility for special needs children like this.
Got a great place for it, Golden Creek.
Yes, Falling Creek would be a great, perfect place, right center of the.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Stouter, you have anything from county administration?
Uh, the only thing I have for you this evening is just a reminder about VACO Legislative Day coming up February first, if anyone wants to attend, please let Bridget know by Wednesday, um, so we can figure out transportation.
Yep. We are just riding up and riding back that evening, so it's not an overnight trip. All right.
Committee.
Committee?
You got something? Sorry.
Or appointments, yeah, that's next. Yep, next up, we have the appointment of, um, Deputy County Administrator Justin Stouter to the Horizon Behavioral Health Board of Directors. Any questions or discussion regarding that? Not, we could entertain a motion.
Agreed.
Motion for Ms. Bensley, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Parker, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Mr. Skelly? No report at this time, Mr. Chair. Um, upcoming in meetings, Mr. Stouter?
Our next scheduled meeting is February twelfth, with the work session starting at five P.M., and the regular meeting starting at seven P.M.
Make motion with adjourn.
And Mr. Scott doesn't like me to call on him first, but he has made a motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Johnson, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and we are adjourned, thank you for coming this evening.